Another one because my first one was starting. But they didn't upgrade it, they just came in. We've got a J three in the closet, throw one at her.
All right, we are all set, Jen.
Oh, wait.
Oh, you want to close, you can close the door, kidding. I left it open, let some air.
You got enough air, I think.
You cold yet?
You cold yet?
I got it off my car, it's funny for me.
There you go.
I was cold by the end of the last meeting. I was actually.
I tried one of these ways to have the agenda all lined up on my computer, like to sit there and fill in the gaps.
I can do that. I can create it so that it's ready to type, but I can't help you bring a computer, that's it.
Oh, so I guess shall I take the role of opening?
Somebody else.
Okay, I will open the meeting at six oh three. Is for the September ninth meeting, twenty twenty five. First is I see no public, so no public comments.
That's what it meant, everybody wanted to sit in.
Yeah, it's technically a public meeting opened to um open meeting laws. Um, that's why we have to do the recording. Um, and so if anyone was here, they have the ability to speak about anything that they really feel like it. Um, so sometimes maybe towards rate case, make it some public comment.
Might have enough chairs then.
We might have enough. We did, we get a decent amount for our our annual meeting, you know, not too bad.
Um, unless you have received a public comment through an email or scrap piece of paper, which has happened.
Not uh when we get to the rate case, I will introduce you to the public comments that have been submitted so far. Um, we'll talk about that in the rate case.
Any changes to the agenda?
I have three ads, sorry. Um, in utter new business, all three of them, they're very quick, they should not take long. Um, I have a fork left, I just want your recommendations um on something with a fork left. Um, records, policy. Um, Jen, I'm hoping you're gonna be able to help me with that a little bit. And um Napa mutual aid agreement. Um, they shouldn't take long for those three ads.
If anybody have a chance to review the minutes?
I do apologize, the minutes were not available to me um until recently. Um, so I doubt many people have had a chance to review them. Tyler did write them from the last meeting, I did edit them uh quickly as as I have.
Filling out Amanda's name second page?
Yep. I had to add to these, these were pretty, pretty bare bones.
So I just suggest that if I'm going to be referred to as Jen in the documents that Jen should be added as a parentheses or?
Yes, I think that's a good idea. You'd rather us spell the names, correct?
Yeah, I mean, it is at the top.
Right, so I I'll just change it to proper spelling.
Yeah, the amount of time I spent in that hot car, I feel like minutes are.
That was, that was a lot. Almost two hours in the car there.
Yeah. Like laser batteries, right?
That's why your battery got overheated.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as corrected.
Okay. I'll say. I'm in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have the financial report.
Yeah, um. Our balance is a little better than it was last month. And we've were able to pay the Bepsa's entire monthly bill.
Which is back at month in a row, technically, we've been able to do that now.
Yeah.
And we haven't done our rate, our rate case hasn't gone into effect yet, so it's one more month of making it through and then our rate case.
Starting the next billing, right?
Next billing, we'll have the rate case, uh not this billing in September will not have it. The one we're gonna do next week, it'll be the October bill, we'll be the first one with the rate.
So you can see on the second page, if you look at back at August, the Pepsi account was six oh seven ninety two seventy nine. And for September, six oh seven ninety two seventy nine, so the same, so it did not go up anymore. Gone. So for three months in a row, it's been
pretty close.
Pretty close.
Why is the truck loan higher?
Um, I'm gonna look into that, I was um. So essentially, when I do my truck loan, I put the payment in, how much of it was interest versus principal? And then every few months I check to make sure that that matches, and for some reason it didn't match, so I gotta go back and look at why that that was off. Um, but that is the correct, that's this number that I have right now at sixty seven one ninety two is is the accurate number on the um on the state statement right now.
Looks like there was something off in August.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I saw.
Yeah. Ken, you can continue.
Sure. Um, so for the monthly tickler of expenses, um you can see that continues to go down, um which is good. Um, this past month, we had a total of ninety nine thousand dollars in expenses um that um we we essentially were able to pay all those expenses um because of of us being able to maintain our Pepsi, our Pepsi amount. Um, so far in September, we've received twenty nine thousand dollars worth of um expenses. Uh, this is mostly tree trimming, um you're gonna see that when we go to our councils.
You've had another column there with little boxes.
Checks, yeah, so ACH as expected is um a little bit to manage, um a little bit more challenging um than just writing checks once a month. Um, so this is a way of us um identifying ACH, is it scheduled, is it not scheduled? Um, that kind of thing, so this is just, that's for our tracking purposes, Amanda, my.
What does it mean?
Um, I believe, so Amanda's the one tracking it, I'm I'm initiating the payments, I'm I'm having her track it. Um, because we, at first we were both tracking it, and then we are every day going back and going, wait a second. We're not, we're both out of alignment with our tracking. Um, so now I said, Amanda, I'm gonna submit it, um you know, with approved, and you're gonna tell me ACH or not. Um, and then once we have the ACH record that you guys approve tonight, we'll come in and and do the ACH initiation. Um, uh from, I'll do that, so um I believe the checkbox is that um they are set up on ACH um going forward.
Going forward.
Going forward, yeah.
All right.
Because there's more checks this month than.
Okay, I've seen.
So I believe that was what she was doing. About.
Okay.
Um, the other, I just want to call out payroll, um substantially less this month, um is a big part of why um we we've completed most of our um line extension work. Um, at this point, so the payroll um has dropped down because the linemen aren't working for you this month. Um, so that that's been substantial, it will go back up a little bit this month because we're doing make ready um work for the the smart meter project, um so just be aware of that, um that change. From a receivables perspective, um as I mentioned last time, we have our receivables original plan up top, and then down below we have the receivables uh revised, um based on a revised budget. Um. Last month, we ended out um bill, uh collecting about a hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred. Um, we build out one hundred and one thousand, um so that's again continuing to collect our receivables um and improving that um that number, which I don't know if I revised our receivables, we'll have to see that. Um. So that uh that number has i- is continuing to come down um every month. This month, we built out a hundred and six thousand dollars in invoices, um and so far we've collected seventy seven thousand dollars. I will say, I don't expect to hit that number, one of the things after we sent our bills, we actually found that there was an error in the purchase bills. It actually dates dates back to February um that we um them and credit getting credit for their solar. Um, it was something that actually was missed by um the team that was onboarding Eldorado. Um, they didn't realize that that um purchase account uses a different methodology for calculating solar than the other solar accounts, because they actually, their solar fields are physically located in a different spot than their house. Um, so their solar fields feed directly back into the grid and and they get paid for a certain amount. Um, everything is an overage essentially, um and they sell all of it, and then we buy, you know, then we sell them power at a different cost, a hundred percent. So um we build out at an amount that um was was wrong in that hundred and six thousand. Um, we are currently working on what that should have been, um Steve at um Bepsa's helping us with that calculation. Um, and then we've already met with Eldorado to correct it going forward. They said it's probably gonna be a two-month build out um to get that correct. Purchase is the only count affected by that um change, everybody else is fine, um but it is something that um essentially they built out our solar um based on what Barton has, and Barton doesn't have that technology, that's that that got set up. Um, so that was just, it was just a mess, um and now we've caught it luckily and and we're got it, we're gonna probably have to give them a credit. Um, they probably won't have a a bill for a couple months. So we'll make up for it, but uh it's um just something to be aware.
How much money we talking, Paul?
Total, from February to now?
Yeah.
Ten thousand dollar credit, probably. It's it's three thousand dollars a month.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, he his bills are, I mean, the bills for them are are six, seven, eight, up to twelve thousand dollars a month, so yeah, it's it's a big, he's a big user, big producer kind of situation.
It's a lot of money.
Um. Uh, he has lots of different things, I mean, everything's electric in the house, um I mean, if you, I don't know if you've ever been inside, the whole thing, the setup commercial. Um, I mean plumbing, he's got every single bathroom is on its own, professional grade um water heater. Um, he's got pipes in there that are this big for plumbing, it's just, it's it's clearly built to be industrial, and that's what he uses it for, and same with the electricity.
Yeah.
Um. He has a heated pool, two heated pools, really. Um, so I mean, he uses, he uses the power. No doubt about it. Yep, exactly. Um. So as I said, I I must have missed doing the receivables, we can pull that up um if you want. Um, but I I can tell you receivables is going down, continuing to go down, still in that thirty thousand range. Um, the uh age receivables, um most, most of that is um the Sawyer account, um is still making up for that, they have been paying, but it's slow. Um, the, I just a quick update on the um general store account, um that is now down under two hundred thousand, that's owed, um so that's about one month behind. Um, so that's, I'm sorry, two thousand, two thousand dollars. I would say, you almost got scared there, so that's less than a month, so they're they're less than a month behind, that was the plan, is is put them on eight, eight dollar, eight hundred dollar a month payment plan, or eight hundred dollar a week payment plan, which would get it so that they're they're actually gonna be probably by December paid off and and i- paying in advance of that.
You said Jacksonville General Store?
Correct.
Yeah.
The man who makes all the money? Just wanted to re hear that, that's all.
Um. So, so the payment plans appear to be working, um it does seem to be helping, and the way we calculated the repayment plans is is not only will you get to where you're supposed to be, but you'll have a little buffer uh going forward, um and so that does seem to be working. Um, monthly expenses, um quickly go through this, um BLCT did our Q three quarter, third quarter, uh this this document here. Um. They are um essentially their quarter, our third quarter. Insurance is due, that's workers' comp, as well as um our our building and our vehicles. Um, Green Mountain Power had to replace a LCD screen, this is something we authorized them to do on our recloser, it was something we identified as a problem, um they had, it was fifteen hundred dollars for the part, and then some labor, um so that's three thousand. And then uh this is kind of cra- I just, this baffles, go ahead.
What's an LCD screen?
It's a LC, for the recloser at the metering point, there's an LCD screen, uh screen that tells us that everything's working fine, and and it just wasn't working at all, uh it's a required part in order to get to tell, look, our system's working while we're.
Where is this located?
At the metering point by Sprang Sugar House. Yeah, yeah. And it's actually a refurbished part, they happen to have one in stock, it was refurbished, so we jumped on that. Um, so, and then the other Green Mountain Power bill is just crazy, baffles me. Um, but um this was for Lori Williams, um had her transformer changed out. Um, I couldn't get any line crew to come and do it, um and so we had to call to have Green Mountain Power come. We had to pay uh we had to pay for our our three guys to come, they're about two hundred dollars an hour, uh for them to come down. Um, minimum charge of three hours, it only took them an hour and a half, but we got charged three hours because it's a minimum charge of three hours. And then uh we had to pay for their dinners, which is fifty dollars um for three of them, just to give some perspective, so that transformer change out was nineteen hundred, nineteen hundred dollars. Our guys can change it out in about a half an hour, transformer, um at seventy dollars a car for two, two guys to do it. So i- if there's any, I just want to give the perspective of having those linemen in-house, it's so important. Um, you know, really gives that perspective of what what we could be saving, what we could be.
Wasn't something that could wait until one of us.
No, it was a complete outage, um so unfortunate, so Rod was available, but no one else was, um and he was attached to uh two certified lineman on a transformer change out. Um, so I mean, the the whole point was to minimize how often we're doing this.
Right.
Um, and so that that's working, I just wanted to just kind of give you a demonstration of what what the costs are versus what we can do it for. Um, as expected, mileage uh this month was pretty high, um Nepo Conference, uh AMI uh meeting in Swatton, and then the mileage to the Vepsa meeting um this month. Um, Alf Arbor submitted their um their monthly bill, fourteen hundred dollars. Um, and then there, uh there's a little bit extra trimming I asked him to do, this is a separate bill.
Fourteen hundred or fourteen thousand?
Thousand, man, I am not talking right tonight, I'm sorry.
Just wanted to make.
I'm glad you guys are keeping me on my toes, I'm sorry. Um, fourteen thousand dollars was the was the monthly bill, and then uh Poverty Row, we had them do one span on Poverty Row um that I asked them to just invoice separately, that was not part of the original um bid process, we we had them do that separate. Um, this was something we worked in conjunction with the town to do, they're trying to get it cleaned up there a little bit for um Old Home Week, and we we're under budget in tree trimming, so we we included that. Um, August electric bills, water bill, um some T-shirt uniforms for the guys and Amanda, and then uh Vemers, which is our retirement plan. Um. WW Building Supplies, I don't know if I'm exactly sure, seventeen dollars. Um, we got some strap clamps for the um uh going up a pole, the straps that hold the conduit on, we need to buy some of those. Um, Amanda, um actually tripped, we had uh we have those mats for underneath the desk, the plastic mats, and Amanda tripped on it and fell. Um, so they make wheels that make it so you don't need those mats. Um, I've used them for years, I actually brought some from for my chair from my house when I first started here. Um, so I ordered her side of those wheels so we can get rid of the mats, just be aware of that. Um, she was fine, no issue, but it 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 needs to be removed, it was about.
You okay?
She's okay, um it was uh we we it was humped up and it was there, it was humped up for like two weeks, I I couldn't get it to go down, and I, it just, it needed to be removed. Um, Casella, um that's two months, it's just the timing of the invoices, um we we pay that at the end of the month, and then um they sent the other one just in time for this, so that'll, that's, it's um it's two different months that you're seeing there, that's why you're seeing two of them. Credit card is just our basics this month, um we had the um Ooma um office, we had Adobe for Amanda's computer, we had um can't remember all of them, but um if you need to see that, we can get into that. Um, Delta Dental Standard, um our internet for DV fiber. Um, we had our mailing um insert for our rate case, um was a hundred and thirty six dollars from Creative Technology to mail that, and then our regular mailing of um seven hundred and twenty six dollars. And then our bill, our taxes for fuel tax, MVP Healthcare, um sales and use stats, and our website payment. The seventy one oh, seven thou- seventy one thousand four, and then wax purchases for fuel. Pretty easy month.
So that, that's the one that we were able to pay in full.
In full, correct, then we've already paid it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think it came out with the tree trimming, tree trimming obviously being seventeen thousand dollars of of this, I think it's twenty nine thousand um that we have to pay extra, I didn't, I didn't do math, um you know, well, because we already paid Vepsa the seventy one thousand out of the hundred and five thousand, so.
I'll make a motion that we approve the warrant for the accounts payable.
Anybody want to second that?
Yep, the sheet passed, wrong.
Yep.
Wrong this times.
Yes, please. Payroll warrant, um as I said, it's a little less than what we've been seeing, which is great. Um, big changes is in the linemen's, lineman pay. Um, for the most part, this doesn't, this is our, we have one week in here, I believe, with the new uh COLA adjustment, the cost of living adjustment that we did, um starting for September first. Um. So there's that, and um the only other thing I just want to update, I meant to say it in the last meeting, because I'm remembering, I'm gonna say it right now. Um, for those of you who don't know, Rod um Bemis um was diagnosed with cancer. Is that, I don't know how many of you know that or not, it was a pancreatic cancer, um so he did have it removed, his pancreas. Um, so he was doing really well, he is back now.
Pancreas or?
Pancreas.
Yeah.
Yeah, um he's doing really well, um I believe he's um, I don't know if they've had a a scan yet, there's the second piece still. Nope. Um, but I I meant to mention at the last meeting, he was about to go in for the surgery, he has now had it, and he's um not able to lift any more than ten pounds, but he is um back and being a pain in the butt again. So, why it was like?
I said he just better be pain, be a good patient.
Exactly, I I asked, first thing I asked, that was the first thing I asked him, is how Cheryl, when I talked to him after the surgery.
And he said?
And he said, oh, she's fine.
So it sounds like his same.
Oh, yes.
Gruff.
Absolutely. Uh, I wanted to make sure you guys have that on your radar. I did ask if he needs anything, um he's not the kind of person that needs things and doesn't get it himself, so um I didn't do anything special, but um it it just be aware of that, it is something that.
Just for the minute.
Which, which brother? Rod or?
Rod.
Rod, that's what I thought you said.
Yeah, yeah.
Just for the minutes.
Yeah, um I'll make a motion that we approve the payroll warrant.
Oh, yes, thank you. Sorry, I got distracted.
I'll second that.
None of the we've recorded, signed it.
Oh, sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You in favor, Ken? Payroll?
Yes.
I mean, you signed it, so I guess you are.
He starts long night, well, thank you.
All right, um. This manager's report, you're good with that?
No.
So for our manager's report, um the uh notification customers has been sent. Um, the first bill customers will receive um with the new rate will be October sixteenth, two thousand twenty five. Um, we've received two complaints so far, I think, um and then bo- uh both of them, well, we had received two complaints. One of these, um we have heard from personally um and spoke with. Um, the other one, I I'm not even sure who they are. Um, and um but these are the two comments that were submitted to the Public Utility Commission. Um, and then there's another person who's complained who has not submitted to the Public Utility Commission, so um just to read this, um the justification for the January increase um was well, hadn't risen rates in a long time, on end quote, I thought that was ridiculous justification until this. Um, I would like to see the exact breakdown of increases in all the categories they noted. Many of our residents live on small incomes, and another twelve point four seven nine increase would be difficult to cover. Um, and then the second one was, uh quote, they have got to be kidding. They just did a twenty five percent increase last year, now want to do another twelve plus percent. Um, is there going to be an option for those who supplies electric to the town, end quote? Does anyone have any questions on those? Um, they, they will be addressed in the public hearing that we have, um, with the Public Utility Commission. Um, both of these, um, will be, I can tell you based on what they are saying in these, these will both be addressed directly from the Public Utility Commission. Um, those breakdowns are actually in the case that was submitted. Um, and has essentially the, the commission can see that num- those numbers, um, and the second, um, uh, they will also address that they're the ones who said that there's no other option for electric in town. So, um.
As far as Joyce goes, will she ever receive something on paper that she can read?
So if you submit a comment to the Public Utility Commission, they will send you a personal invitation to come to the public hearing. Um, those, that's up to them. We don't have a date set. It's kind of weird. Last time we had our schedule date within a very short amount of time with our rate case. This time they said we need to investigate and created no timeline for the investigation. Um, so we're not sure when the, the, that public hearing will be. I'm more than happy to discuss, um, you know, here. Um, it's just not a conversation we can actually have through the PUC, um, without, um, without it being public. And, and I think those, those need to be very structured with our attorney present. Um, and so that's, these are official comments. If somebody can't even talk to me, I'm more than happy to talk to them about it. Um, but the, the official comments are going to be addressed with our attorney. Um, and that will happen during our, our public hearing. Um, as for AMI, um, we have, it was six at the time of writing this. It's now eight of the DCUs, nine DCUs, um, installed for pole readiness. Um, last week, uh, we worked, uh, this week we did two, last week we did three. Um, so there, we, we should have those completed shortly. We do have one that needs a pole replacement. That's something we're gonna do on Thursday. Um, we'll replace the pole and, and transfer things over. Um, a lot of this, we're gonna be able to submit, um, for reimbursement. Um, the state will reimburse us for it, but we need to be careful because the more we re- we ask for reimbursement now, the less we'll get reimbursed for the meters themselves. Um, if, so my thought is I'm kind of keeping this on hold. We're keeping track of everything. We're gonna submit the meter order. Get that fully reimbursed and then if there's extra, we'll go back and, and get these reimbursed. This is my theory on it. I don't want to run out of money and then out of pocket have to pay for the meters. This is, we can handle this, um, within our budgets. Um, this is pretty spot work. Um, the one thing that's different with Jacksonville, of course, we have to be different. Um, we are going to be using fiber for our connections to the DCUs. Um, all the other utilities are using cell coverage. Um, well, this was an extensive conversation that we, um, have had, um, with the project managers and a Clara and Vepsa. Um, essentially they're telling me if fiber is available, you should one hundred percent do fiber. Um, it's gonna be instantaneous with, uh, outage management in particular. Um, right now, eh, for all the other utilities, if there's an outage and you, you're trying to recover, um, that cell coverage can take up to an hour before it'll receive the signal from the, um, DCU that it's back online. Um, that's not a huge deal, but if you're trying to in real time see where your outage is, forty-five minutes is a long time for it to recover that outage. Um, so that's one area, um, instant, um, being able to ping, uh, the meters, should do meter shut offs remotely. Those are things that we're gonna be able to do much faster, more efficient. Um, the other thing that we ran into was when we had cell coverage, um, the, the tech from McLaren, when he was here, he, his little computer would tell me his cell coverage at five bars and then he would have Verizon trying to make a phone call and says there's zero bars. And so he's like, I really can't tell you there's very good cell coverage. And I, I said, I can tell you there isn't very good cell phone coverage. Uh, and so what, what's actually happening now is Swan has DC, two C- DCUs they installed that are self-coverage that actually wound up, um, not having enough coverage. And so all the, the other utilities are now having to move their DCUs that are at the bottom of the pole, so they're easy to work on, to the top. And they're having to move them off the poles and putting antennas on. They have up to a forty-foot antenna. So now all of a sudden, these are added costs that they weren't expecting to have to do. So fiber to me is like a hands down, it's an easy decision. There's one challenge with fiber is they don't negotiate the contract with DV fiber. We do. Um, and so these are very small connections. And so I've expressed concern. I mean, if we're paying seventy-five dollars a month for each DCU, we have nine DCUs, that's what DV Fiber's always planned as. That's where I came up with seventy-five. And we're looking at like six thousand dollars. That's a lot of money. Um, right now, it's, um, this, where we would pay the cell phone company, uh, twenty dollars a month. That's what's negotiated in the Clara contract. So it's, there is some, but not, not the scale we're talking about. Um, we've been trying to create, come up with creative solutions. Obviously, we don't know what DV Fiber is gonna say. They might come in and say, don't worry about it. They might say, oh, you only need one megabit per second. That's super low. We'll give you this rate. Um, but the other option we have is they have pole attachment agreements with us. We can negotiate a pole attachment agreement, adjustment in favor of paying for fiber. Uh, so that's kind of our last case of, if they said, to, to alleviate the cash burden on us. We'll say, you know what? You can tap our polls for this discount, um, in exchange for using the DCUs.
As long as we have everything accounted for, for an audit.
Correct. Yeah, that, and it actually needs to be approved by the Public Utility Commission to, to do that negotiation. So it would be a process, but, um, I think it's just a good, for me, I'm sitting here going cash flow wise, we can't afford another three thousand dollars, you know, every year. If we could avoid it, how do we avoid it? And this was a great way that we were like, oh, that, that would work. Um, you know, we would lose out on the income, but at the second time, it's not. Um, so we do have a meeting with DV Fiber on Friday, um, to discuss with the, between the engineers, um, on both parties to figure out what is needed. Um, and hopefully they'll be able to come up with a price shortly thereafter.
I wouldn't want to go into negotiations with CCI, but
Absolutely.
They have fiber too.
Correct.
And they owe us money.
Correct. They also don't. They don't have a pole attachment agreement though. They're, they're joint owners of the poles. So there's a little less leverage there. So they actually own the pole as much as we do. Um, there has been some conversation, um, about that, a Clara very highly recommended the CUDs are going to be a better performing product.
Okay.
Just based on their experience.
Okay.
Um, CCI is as fast as you can. So we actually, we saw one today. We were working at Course Road, uh, or I'm sorry, we were working at, um, uh, Wilmington Crossroads at Fowler Road and they ran the line, clearly ran, ran the line up Wilmington Crossroads, ran the line down, uh, Fowler Road, never connected them. Like clearly just dead ended at there, just sitting out there. We're like, you were here. You just need to make connection. And then it would have been done, but you didn't. Uh, so we're, I mean, it, it's just they're putting it together as fast as they possibly can and, um, I mean, it'll, it'll work. Um, I, I'll look into it, but I, I anticipate it's, um, it's gonna be easier to work with DV fiber and I would much rather support the local if it's an option financially. There is a meeting, uh, September fifth, uh, which we already had, um, to do that. Again, it's, it's so much the same. Um, another meeting this Friday. Um, and then there is a DCU training that's going to happen, of course, in Swatton, which I'll talk about that in a second. Um, that is, uh, required training on the thirtieth of September, first of October. Um, that's a training that they have said they want the techs to go to, the people who would be working on it. I asked Dale if he's available, um, to go. He is not. Um, I'm seeing if anybody else is available, but worse comes to worse. I'm, I'm gonna have to go probably, um, to see if we can get, get that coverage. Um, it is required training. Um, tree trimming, no major updates for this year. Um, I'm being told October first-ish, the week of October, first week of October, they're gonna start work on, um, Route one hundred from the sewer plant to the top of Reedsboro Mountain. But that's a, a very rough estimate of when it's expected. Um, so that'll be, that's gonna be working every day straight through to get it done. Once we start. Um, we, I'll be giving you an RFP for twenty twenty-six a little later. Um, proposals will be due at the next board meeting. I'm hoping to award that bid in the October meeting. Um, so that we are ready to go and have everything situated for next year on tree trimming. Battery storage, no major updates. We're starting to get closer to recommendations on what batteries, where batteries. Um, and how big batteries, uh, that's just something where, we're having those conversations, but nothing really major to update here. EV chargers, I was hoping to have that answer of whether we got the grant or not. Um, at this meeting, I am expecting it literally any minute, um, whether we have that or not. Um, just so you're aware, there, there's, I've been told there's a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in this grant. We're applying for fifty-seven thousand of it. Uh, so to give some perspective, there, you know, might not happen. Um, but I guess a lot of the other people who've applied have asked for very broad projects, like asking for ten of them. Um, and so they're saying, well, can you just award one for each of these instead of, so you can do a little bit broader, um, connection? Uh, or can you design the design phase? Can you design one that works for ten different locations? Um, and make it work. And, and so that, they're trying to see if they can work out more money, um, from that. So that, that may be part of the delay right now. But, um, that's something through Vepsa we don't really know. Um, for outages, um, we really had one outage, Allen Lane, um, we have squirrel and transformer, uh, last week. And line extensions, um, you see the updates there, um, waiting on a lot of these. We did complete the, the Route one hundred one, um. Going into Vepsa updates, um, Vepsa has agreed to finance, um, uh, with a long-term note for Jack- Jacksonville's um, debt bank equivalent rate of five point five percent for six years. Um, this is something that John and I were working on the negotiation of. Um, big concern I have is we just submitted a rate case. We have no extra money to pay that, um, starting now. Um, so they actually deferred until July twenty twenty-six a repayment plan. Um, so what that does is we'll have to pay our interest between now and then, which is gonna be about twenty-five hundred dollars because it's on that five point five instead of eight percent that we're currently paying. Um, which we can do, we can manage currently, uh, because that's already part of the rate case. And that'll allow us to submit a rate case for sometime around April, May time period. Uh, which will get us to be able to include this, uh, long-term note that we, um, we have here. So, um, that worked out pretty well. It is like eleven, eh, eh, like eleven thousand dollars a month. Um, just to give some perspective, it's not a small number, um, but this does have us paying it back in six years. Um, and we'll, we'll talk more about this, um, as, as we get further on into the agenda. Bellawatt charging, um, system. This is the, um, battery charging system that we talked about a couple meetings ago. Um, for customers who have electric vehicles, um, if you charge during certain times of day, you get a cheaper rate. Um, we have had the update from Vepsa. I don't know if you remember, Vepsa had us send out this notification that we were gonna do five customers. And then kind of backed out on that and said, well, no, it's five customers total. Um, and we have six customers who are interested in, um, so they're essentially, we're going to start doing that, uh, in October. Uh, my suggestion is, essentially they're saying start with one, maybe two people per utility. And slowly as you get better, eh, by the end of the trial period, we'll expand to the full five customers. Um, which will probably be six in our case because I'm not gonna leave one person out, um, for that. Um, but my suggestion is that we start with, uh, I was, I think it makes sense to start with your car if you're interested. Um, I know you have an electric vehicle, um, and if we screw up your bill, you're not gonna yell at us. Um, and then the other person I think that we should start with, um, is John Robom. He has been part of this pilot program from the beginning. Um, his car is actually one of the vehicles that's in the test environment. He hasn't been getting paid for it. This is an opportunity to give him a little credit. Um, just to give some perspective, I just, I looked at John Robom's today. Since June, it'd be a nine dollar credit on his bill. It's not huge. We're not talking massive amounts of money. Um, but we, we're talking a little bit of a discount, uh, for charging at the right time. Um, meter training, uh, meter training was actually really, really good. Um, but what I have, has been made very clear, um, based on that meter training that I had in, uh, Swatton. Richard and Amanda both need to be part of that training going forward. Um, it is very technical. Um, it is very specific to, um, to the meters that we're going to be implementing. Um, so both Ludlow and Jacksonville um, have voiced our concerns that this is happening in Swatton. Um, and this is, um, they need to be closer. They are planning to do closer trainings. I'm hoping to, to have one. Um, they, they voiced that there might do one in Ludlow, which would be much more reasonable for our, our, our staff to go to. Uh, but we may need to close, uh, the office for a day just to make that happen, which is fine. Um, but there will be other trainings, um, for the, um, the meters. And, and when I say meters, it's meters and the software to interact with the meter. It's both. Uh, that's why Amanda has to be part of it as well. Um, CCI, no major updates. We're still working on it, um, from there. Uh, just a quick update on the NEPA conference, um, was actually really amazing. It was really intriguing, intriguing to see how um, quite, quite honestly, how far behind, um, ISO New England, um, and the New England grid is be, um, for power. Um, we really can't handle what we have right now. Um, and, um, AI data centers are going to double, triple our loads. Um, and really we're being told the only thing that's really capable of handling an AI load is, is a nu- nuclear power plant. Um, so New England does, we have one in New England. Um, we're not allowed to buy it from them as Vermont, uh, locations. So not expecting a huge, it's not like we're expecting that we're gonna have an AI plant put in Vermont. But what we are expecting is that these data centers right now, where ISO New England can't keep up with the power production. So we're buying from places like Texas and Florida who have a lot of power, um, currently. Um, and that's being brought into New England. Um, but with these AI data centers, um, we're expecting that there won't be as many overages in the power production, um, from places like Texas and Florida. Um, and so we may be in a position that ISO New England is gonna have to figure out how do we produce more power at a local level. Uh, so it's just interesting to hear some of this, this conversation at a, at a national level and in a local level. Um, I did get a chance to speak with South Hadley Electric, um, which was one of my goals for going to this, um, about providing mutual aid to us. They're very interested. Um, the big thing we need to do is sign a NEPA contract, um, mutually aid contract, which essentially just outlines what we can be billed for, how often we can be billed, that kind of thing, and how off, how fast we have to pay that bill. Um, I am working on that now. I'll give you a little update a little later. Um, I have a question for you guys on that. Uh, travel coming up this month. I just last week went to, uh, Waterbury for the Vepsa meeting. And, uh, as mentioned, the DCU training, someone from Jacksonville is gonna have to go, whether it's me or someone, I'm not sure. Respectfully submitted, Jake. Lot going on. You good to go into old business? Old business, just a reminder, ethics training, um, did you wind up getting there, Stugs? I know you were.
I, I finished it, but I haven't gotten the email back yet, saying that it's.
If you get an email, just print it off and bring it to me and I can scan that.
I'm, I'm beginning to wonder at this point.
Yeah.
Five days later, why haven't we gotten one?
Okay. Yeah, I was, they checked spam. I forget who it's from. It is from weird, from a weird spot.
Yeah.
Uh, weird email address. Um, revised budget, I don't, I don't think there's any action items on the revised budget. Um, just be aware of it. I, I wanted to present it to you. Um, I, I also included it in the last meeting that we had. Um, so it's just, it's more for your information than anything. Um, as for, uh, efficiency Vermont, um, John actually came down. Uh, we had efficiency Vermont come to our office and, um, take a look at our whole building. Um, this was something I mentioned in the last meeting that was going to be happening. Um, they essentially told us to hire, to, to go out and get contractors to tell us how much things are gonna cost, which is not what I expected. Um, it's not very helpful. But it, it was, you know, it was nice. They actually had, I think he was an engineer come down, right?
Yeah.
An energy engineer come down and we were looking, we looked upstairs. I don't know if you know, there's an empty apartment upstairs above here. And then also our space is in here. They essentially told us, hire contractors, figure out what everything costs. And we'll come back and tell you how much we're providing, but didn't sound like a whole lot was going to be included. So I haven't been in a huge rush to find out, but I figured I'd give you an update. They told us windows and doors are probably not much, but if we're doing something else with it, they might include more. So not, kind of what I expected to hear, but not super informative.
They gave us some suggestions.
Correct.
Yeah. And they sent those insider windows for the, for the winter time here.
Correct, yeah. They did tell me, they, they hooked me up with the, hooked me up with the person from the Vermont Bond Bank, Ken. And, but he, I mean, they can't give us, we're not eligible for Bond Bank directly, so it's not really helpful. So it was, it was interesting. It was kind of what I expected, but it was worth the due diligence to go through the process. Vepsa debt. So I give you a quick overview of the.
Was that just for, was that for energy savings or? In, in whole, or was that for? Like, just for? Heat savings?
It was energy savings as a whole. They looked at lighting, they looked at insulation, heat. What else? I think that, that's pretty much it. Yeah. So they did look at our whole build, like we were talking about lights out in the, in the garage, that kind of thing. So yeah, it was the whole, the whole thing.
Seems to be a few things we can do without a whole lot of expense.
Correct. I, I would agree with that.
We just need to put it on the list and get it done.
Right. It was, one thing that was really good is we have, I don't know if you know, Laura, that we, we heat this space and we heat the garage. There's an in-between room that isn't heated. So it's essentially like an outside wall here and an outside wall there and nothing in between. So there was a lot of conversation about that middle room. Should we insulate it and heat it? Or should we try to keep those as outside walls? And, and I think the conclusion was, keep those as outside walls. Insulate them like they're outside walls. And that middle room, they did say like the, the windows in there. You probably should put insulation over them. Get rid of those, because they're just a huge heat loss, even though you're not heating that room. It's affecting these rooms by having those, those being open.
That's something quickly done, very quickly, just.
Yep.
Put some insulation on both sides.
Right.
Make the sandwich.
Exactly. So it was interesting. It was something, I mean, I, I might call Adam Burisma to see what he can do. But it's not, I don't think it's a huge rush. It didn't sound like we were going to get thousands and thousands of dollars by doing it this year versus doing it in five years. So. Any other questions on that? The next one was our Vepsa debt, essentially the. There's those seven page contract in here that I think you, you've given John and I the authorization to. To negotiate it, but I wanted to put this in front of you to make sure that there were no issues. I don't see anything crazy. As I said, it's a seventy-two month repayment period. Five point five percent per year. This is going to be a descending payment. So essentially, we are going to, at the beginning, be paying a, if you look at this page right here, it gives you kind of the anarxization of the loan. And you can see we're going to start with eleven thousand three hundred dollar payment. And by the last month, we're paying, we're only going to be paying eight thousand four hundred and seventy-one. So just so you're, you're aware of that, it will be a descending payment, which is good, because we can put our rate case in for the higher amount. And then each month it's actually going to go down. So there'll be a little bit more buffer room. And the entire total of the loan, we're. Is seven hundred nine thousand, so it's a hundred thousand dollars to finance it. So pretty, pretty good in my opinion for what we're getting. This has been presented to all board members at Vepsa. They unanimously agreed to do it. They think that it's important to support Jacksonville in this regard. And so they, it was something that was approved pretty quickly.
That's opposed to, was it eight percent we're paying now?
Eight, yeah, eight and a half. It's prime plus three and a half percent or something like that.
So we're saving three percent from now and interest until for the next year, six years.
This doesn't start until July, actually, the prepayments, but we will pay every, if we sign this now, our, like, we actually. We sign this now, we will have a five point five percent interest rate starting now. But no payments on the loan, on the principal of the loan until next July. That'll be the first month we receive that principal payment plus interest. We're just paying the interest. So it won't go up, won't go down. It stays flat from now until July. Does that make sense?
Which is a net gain for us.
A net gain. And actually, what I forgot about is we're actually, during this negotiation time, we're actually in a two-month deferment of complete no interest. So we actually don't have an interest payment this month or next month, which has been nice until this is negotiated.
Looking at this timeline, January twenty twenty fifth. And payment.
Yeah, it says January twenty sixth. It's just, it's not, that's wrong. It's July. If you actually look in our, at the beginning of the contract, the contract itself actually says July first, right here.
July first, twenty twenty five.
Twenty twenty six.
Twenty twenty six is the start of the.
Yeah. So she's, she's just using that as a demonstration of what it should look like over time. Yeah, with twenty twenty five, we'd be really behind. So this has not been signed yet. I anticipate we should sign it in the next couple of weeks. I think if you guys authorize John to sign it, I think that would work, or, or me, it doesn't matter. I'm fine either way. But I think, you know, depending on how everything. Things may, we may need to add to this or take away from it. It's fine. So I think that's just negotiation still at this point. I, I don't anticipate a huge add, but I think it would be good to get the authorization, because I think before our next meeting, we'll, we'll sign it.
Do you like the authorization?
I don't, yeah, just because we never, I don't think we ever got an authorization to execute the contract. We got authorization to negotiate.
Be the signer. If I can make a motion. Make a motion for.
I have to.
Make a motion that John, authorized John to be the signer of the loan with Vepsa. For the six year. Loan to pay off the Vepsa debt. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Yeah.
Okay.
Taking through it. It's only been an hour. It says, we're taking through it. It's only been an hour. It's not too bad.
It was dark the last time.
Well, I keep looking outside. I'm like, oh, it's starting to get dark. I think it's just getting earlier.
Thirty-seven, it's dark now. Now next. New business.
So the new business, we have to approve the tree trimming request for proposal. This is something that. We really just built off of last year. We did a little bit more explanation on requirements from contractors specifically around the single phase versus three phase. Because we are adding some three-phase lines this year. So we wanted to make sure that that was clear, that there's a twenty foot from the base of the pole, because the way three-phase lines go, they're. Single phase is just one line at the top of the pole. Three-phase has an arm across it with, with lines that stick out on either side. So it adds a good five feet to the measurement. And so we have to make sure that that's clear, that if they're doing work on Route one hundred where there's three-phase. They have that. I did make it, last year we had some proposals that included deposits. Which kind of scared me, because they wanted like deposit, where they wanted like fifty percent of the payment upfront. And I was going, I don't have fifty percent of the payment upfront. And so I make that a little bit more clear in here, that, that if you want a deposit, you need to wait for us to have it.
Looked like a million, million dollars of just about doing it.
A little bit, yeah, just about.
I go up, just go up A day, the wall, oh, there's Big Michael's on the road.
Yeah, A day is another one of that. So this, this, just so you guys know, on this, this year, we have Vermont Route one hundred. Which is, is the northern section from the center of Jacksonville up to the metering point. We have Parsons Road, Gates Pond Road, Fowler Road North, so Fowler Road. Before the Rod and Gun Club, essentially, to the, to the Fowler Road intersection through one hundred. Gates Pond, our whole, our whole jurisdiction on Gates Pond, Bernard Road, Birdville Road, Elwin Lane. You'll notice that we left off Reed Hill, Holland Lane, and your Butler Brook.
Yeah. Two trees all over the place.
Wait, there's, there is trimming to do on those. Essentially, we were looking at it. We know what our bids were last year that were submitted. And we needed to cut back on miles to be trims in order to get it so it's even close to our miles.
On this document, the date of issue, you have January tenth, twenty twenty five.
You know how many times we've looked at this and still have it wrong? I will correct that. Thank you.
Okay.
So the plan is to issue this tomorrow. We will have a pre-bid meeting on September eighteenth at noon here. You are all welcome to attend. We will likely have four or five interested parties interested in coming out. And as I said, this is very similar to what we did last year, so there, there know what to expect this year. And I've already had at least two bidders who've said they're very interested in doing this. So I think we'll, we'll have some options. I do need a motion to approve that RFP to be sent out.
I'll make a motion to approve the, or.
Request for proposal.
The tree trimming requests for proposals.
Is there a second? All in favor?
This tree trimming is going to be a solid or just some danger trees?
No, this is, this is trimming, yeah, just like what we're doing on Sedag Lake. Danger trees are included as well. We've actually, this year we went through and marked all the danger trees that we've, we can identify. And so we, that, I think that'll help.
I'm going to speak to him in the morning. He won the Glen Brown's Road there, driveway.
Yeah.
There's one pine this big, they want the entrance of his driveway. He owns the land. The tree's right there, the power line's right behind it, the wire's behind it. And the tree could fall right across the road and Glenn's a logger now. But I said, we'll take care of it. We'll cut and clean it up while this is stretching around.
And, and. And one of those pines fell last year.
But that's what should have been cut when they put the line out. I'm going to tell them that.
They shut it down.
They put the line up there, him and Lee, they should have cut it with that big. He did it up my way. They'll go maple that big. And he left it across the road. Right near the power line. He said, I left that so your grandson could have it. I said, my kids got a sugar lot and pipeline. I said, why would he want to? So I was telling Stanley, but when Stanley, he run crews up that way and they cut it down.
So the next thing is the VEMR's, so essentially VEMR's just got approval, approval for a five-year plan on rate increases. These are outlined. We are group B, just so you're aware. So this is set by the Treasury of the state of Vermont. They have approval from the legislature for these rate decreases. It's, you can see the employee is going up. For a long time, it was just the employer's contribution that was going up. It is now both the employee and the employer's going up. Employer a little bit higher than the employee, but just be aware of that.
Was that account in deficit or?
I don't really know what the reason was. I, it was, it wasn't a deficit. But I think that, I'm not convinced that this particular, I think they've recovered the deficit now or, or have the plan to. But this is just a plan going forward to, they don't do it again. Yeah. Next thing, just, this is mostly just for your awareness. Essentially, every year, Vepsa does a collection of salaries and benefits for all positions within the utility. And so this is what, essentially, if you've submitted to it, you get a copy of it. We did, we submitted last year. We also submitted this year. So I just wanted to give you this perspective. I did add an average column on the far right, just so you're aware of that. I mean, summary is Jacksonville is pretty far behind all of it, but just so you're aware.
They're pretty small too.
We are very small too. Yeah, comparatively to the other utilities, it's, on the second page, you can actually see the utilities and what their sizes are. Revenue wise and customers wise, so that I think helps as well. Orleans is really the only one on this particular machine that is even remotely close. But I will tell you their revenue that is, is blank is, is higher than Jacksonville, because they actually have Ethan Allen Plant. Furniture construction plant. I just wanted, you guys tell me when you're ready. Yep. So forklift, there is a forklift that's available. So running into a little bit of a problem. That we. This is a problem. All the utilities are being faced with right now with this whole meter project. That essentially a Clara just shows up and drops off fifteen pallets of meters. And we don't deploy meters fifteen at a time. And so a lot of these, the utilities are getting storage containers and putting them like in Connect storage containers. Because you're only deploying twenty, thirty at a time, and there's literally fifteen pallets that you have to store. And so one of the things that has been discussed is can we clean up this room a little bit? Can we maybe build a rack for our reels, so that we can use this middle room as storage a little bit better than we are currently? There is a forklift that was actually Coombs's, then it went to the winery. And now it's sitting at Purchases House that is available for us to take for free. My understanding is there might be some work that has to be done to it.
Sounds quite old.
It is old. And so there's, essentially. If, if it needs a new battery, it's going to cost like four thousand dollars. It's an electric, electric one. There are forklifts that are available for like twenty. Um, there are forklifts that are available for like twenty-five hundred bucks on marketplace that are electric, refurbished, ready to go. So to me, I don't see, I don't think we want that, I think it's just almost creating more of a headache than it's worth.
Then you gotta get rid of it.
But Cole, uh, Boysver has already offered to get rid of it for purchase, I assume he would do that for us as well. So I, I just, I'm not sure if that's something we want to get into or not. Um, but eh, eh, we do struggle, like, we can't move these transformers, just, just so you kind of give some perspective. The pad mount transformers, there's no way to move them, the only thing we can do is hook it up to a bucket. And the bucket truck can pick it up, um, but that's hard in this back room. The way they got in there is Rod brings his tractor down, which is fine, but if we don't have Rod, um, we're stuck a little bit. Um, my, I've moved my tractor down, I cannot move the pad mounts with my tractor. Um, it's too heavy to give some perspective, my tractor can do two thousand pounds and they can't lift those. Um, so I think it makes sense for us to have one at some point. I'm not suggesting we need it now, but I do think we're, we may need one once meters start coming in, because we're gonna have to move those around. Um, they're gonna come in and we're gonna have to find a place for them and we're probably looking at December that being the case, so, but something to keep in mind.
Don't think it would qualify, but I. Hmm, keep in mind passive grant.
Yes.
Because you could be saving the.
Absolutely.
Substantial money.
Good idea, that's a good idea. We were talking, Amanda and I have been talking about the passive grants. Um, I guess she applied for some when she was at the school.
I mean.
And we looked into some.
Six thousand. For municipality, I, I, I'm not really sure.
But then you have to buy new probably, right? For her. Cause they're like brand new and they've.
Basically what I'm asked for, if I want something, eh, are three. Um. Estimates from, you just go online, you pull down from Staples or Quill or, you know, those different accounts and then you submit them.
Yeah.
From there, I don't know what happens, but I can find out, but.
Okay.
You can find out.
I mean, it's worth looking, yeah, it's definitely.
The LCT.
They are, they're like twelve thousand dollars brand new for, for a forklift, so it's, I mean. It's not super expensive, but in the grand scheme of where we're at, I don't think we want to buy a new one if we can buy a used one for like twenty-five hundred.
Yeah.
We're all the matter.
Right.
Uh, yes, exactly, but there, actually it's funny, there's one in Ludlow, uh, not at Ludlow Electric, just in Ludlow. Um, we found, Amanda found today and it was like, oh, we, and that's not that far away. Um, we could hook up, uh, you know, get a, some way of getting up there and, and putting it on a flatbed. And it's one, the, the, one of those zones at Home Depot that you stand on it, so it's a small condensed space, um, would work pretty well, but.
As long as it can lift the weight.
As long as it can lift the weight, that would be the key. Yep. So I, no, no decisions need to be made, I just, if you wanted that free one and us to work on it, tell me. Because I, I think I'm gonna let it pass, um, eh, even though it's free, I'm just concerned that we're gonna get into, um, spending more money than.
Is it working now?
We're not sure, right now it's outside under a tarp. And it's been that way for about six years, seven years.
Is there anyone local who has a forklift that we could rent? When we need it. Rent it, I got one there, don't they?
Yeah, up here, yeah. Um.
The rig's.
Ri, oh, rigs.
Yeah. It was one of the.
I don't know if Matty has, I, so Riggs Disler has one and we have used it before, but the. Riggs is getting more and more complicated now that Rod doesn't want anymore, right? Um, so it, it, it's not as easy to build, use those things. Um. Adam's got a. Uh, he's got a skid steer, does he have a forklift?
Forks on it, yeah.
Yeah.
I do too, but I don't know if I want to rent it.
You wanna come move things around?
Tucker, I still need to.
It, it is tough because it's not something we're gonna use a lot. Um, but there, I mean, we've unloaded transformers from, I mean, when the transformers come, they, they're on a ba, a flatbed. And they don't have a way of moving them, they're, it's you.
Well, just tell Greg Brown, he'll go buy one for two, twenty-five hundred and start renting it to you.
Boy.
Um, maybe I should.
So, um, no, no, absolutely, but, um, yeah, it's something to. I, I, I actually kind of like.
Go and shopping.
Oh, he, he would definitely go.
Yeah, we should save money by getting it ourselves and having our own. That are written, yeah. Not knowing if there's a consistent time that those come in.
Right.
With having ample time to ask.
Well, not, the transformers, we get a call, like, when we order them, but they're six month lead time, so we get a call the day that they're delivering them and say, hey. Your transformers are gonna be here tonight, we're like, oh shoot, you know, go get. So luckily Rod's here and has his, his tractor and he uses it. Uh, but if, again, Rod's not here or it's the middle of winter and he's out of town, that's.
So.
A little more complicated.
If it were, so we have a forklift and it's in here and we get a delivery and it needs to be moved, who's doing the moving?
Would have you training?
Who's doing the trip?
Office staff and Richard probably, I mean, all of the linemen, but I, I, I mean, it's.
Are we insured?
We'd have to check with our insurance on that, yeah. Yeah, there's, there's a whole, if we get a.
Thing where we're gonna increase our workers' comp because you are, so.
Yeah.
Cause everybody's at a different level.
Correct.
But, um, so. Yeah.
No, that's a good point, I should look into that.
Write that down. For Tommy Tucker.
So, so what I will tell you, I don't know if you've, have, have you worked with the LCT on the insurance stuff?
No, no, no.
So you'll call them and you'll tell them, this is what we're gonna do, and they say, oh yeah, that's no problem. And then all of a sudden your audit gets done and they find that's a problem. Uh, that was what happened with the lineman, they were like, oh yeah, you can do that. And then turns, I mean, they do, so what happens is they do, you know, you talk to the regular person, they, they're like, yeah, that's, yeah. Your lecture company is fine to do that. And then once they, the people who actually know the utility.
The underwriters.
The underwriters started looking into it and they go, no. Um, and so you get an audit quarterly and that's how we got hit. But it was just before I started, we got hit with workers' comp big time, um. All right, um, you guys are good with the forklift?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so the only, the other thing, um, we've been trying to, we have stuff. Pa, paperwork from two thousand and one upstairs. Um, there, there's stuff, anything that made it through the flood made it upstairs. Um, and so I, we've been trying to figure out how, what is this process, like, how do you actually get rid of stuff? Um, I know the town, you really can't ever get rid of it. Um, and so I've been asking around and they said, if you create a policy that says this is when we get rid of it. And it's a public policy that's voted on by the board, um, that, um, you can purge documents after that amount of time. It's a public document that says this is how long we keep it for. Obviously, there are certain things we have to keep forever, deeds and, and records of finances and things like that. Um, but, um, this is, this is paperwork, like, customer applications for power. Um, line extensions, these are things we don't, we don't need people, especially if they've already moved out of town, we don't need those records anymore. And so can we create a timeline of when do we get rid of it? So one of the questions I have for you is what should that timeline be? Do you have a preference of what that looks like? Um, I said seven years because that's kind of the standard, but I think we could do ten years. I don't know if you guys have that at all in Bradboro, so that's why I said you might get the help.
The rec, we go by, um.
When the state. State record retention policy.
Yeah.
Is pretty detailed and.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think, I think we kind, we're kind, because we're a municipality, we're sort of guide, you know, guide, there's guidance for us with the state. Of what you can get rid of and how long you need to hold on to things and to be perfectly honest.
Bring it up.
Yeah.
I am like, it's not a road I wanna walk down and learn.
Yeah.
I'm like, I'll just save everything.
Yeah, right.
But.
But that's a, that's a problem, um, I did a lot of work at Wyndham Central.
Okay.
A few years ago on their records retention policy because they had rows of file drawers. And I'm not kidding, a teacher's file might be that.
Right.
That thick if they've been there thirty years.
Well, that's what we, that's what we have, solar files that are just gigantic and it's.
We had to redo the records retention policy.
Yeah.
Make sure it aligned with the state policy.
Yeah.
And then we started.
Perfect, but I'm gonna start with that then, that's really helpful. And that's why I wanted to bring, I figured someone on this board would know where to start with that. Um, we, I saw that there was a rec, records retention policy, um, at other utilities and so I said, oh, we, I don't know if we even have one.
Right.
And if we, I mean, I.
Do we have a policy book?
No. No, uh, we don't have any policies to put in a policy book, so, um.
Probably.
Or, or we do and, uh, nobody knows about them anymore, because that's possible too. Um.
Just don't get rid of them now.
No, well, I don't have that many.
Handwritten ones, there should be.
Oh yeah, no, we have, those are all town, those are all involved, um. But, um, yeah, no, we have.
I mean, if we have gaps that need to be filled that are lost because they got lost. Maybe need to dig back at least my ears being handled.
No, there's certain things obviously that we're not gonna purge at all, there's no interest in it. Uh, but, but some of it, there's.
Sounds like a good job for Amanda.
It's gonna be, Amanda's the one, well, actually, I will tell you, Linda Brown was chomping at the bit to throw things away.
No.
And, um, so we, we, um, kind of held off and, and, um. So we started looking into this a little bit more, I mean, this, there's stuff, there's stuff that doesn't make sense, I mean, customer deposits by day. Um, we, we have a customer deposit by year file, we don't need to keep the by day anymore. Um, you know what I mean? Um, and so that's something that we, um. Yeah, we, we can purge, uh, we just need a policy on.
Would Linda come back to do that job?
She might, she would love to, to be honest.
Yep, just put the structure right out there and.
Right.
Shredder over here.
Right.
Ockdale over here.
I'm gonna say, give her, give her the low cocktail, so she'll be, so she'll be happy.
Make sure Roseman's got dinner, he won't cook.
Um, so the next thing is NEPA Mutual Aid, um, we have mutual aid agreement, if anybody wants to read it, you are more than welcome to. I plan to sign this, uh, tomorrow probably, um, I have read through it, it just says essentially the basics of, um. Essentially, they can charge whatever FEMA outlines for their rates. Uh, what this is gonna do, this is gonna enable us to have South Hadley, Chickopee, um, West Ha, uh, West, um, Westfield. Uh, West Springfield and, um, Chickopee, did I ever say Chickopee? Oh, Holyoke, Holyoke's the last one. Um, all of them are public utilities that are also within the NEPA, um, jurisdiction. So if we have a major outage like that February storm that costs us twenty-six thousand dollars for one tree, um, we can call Hadley to come up and help us with it. Instead of, uh, when Green Mountain Power is completely blocked and they have, uh, they're, they're still gonna be our standard to go to Green Mountain Power. Uh, but we, this will give us a backup solution when instead of Green Mountain Power, um, sending their, uh, contract crew. Um, over, we can tap a different resource. So my question for you and the reason I haven't signed it yet is. We, I was told in two thousand and ten, we chose not to sign this agreement because we use Green Mountain Power. Um, that's the record that NEPA had on it. Um, so my question to Kenny, you're probably the only one that was on then, um, was, is there a reason other than just? I mean, this says we can hire Green Mountain Power still anyway, um, if we want. Um, I wasn't sure if there's any known reason why we shouldn't sign this. Um, it's a very basic, you guys are welcome to read it if you want, but, um, it's a very basic form that just says, um. The rates and how it's structured and how we have to pay it and it's a pretty standard mutual aid agreement.
Yeah.
But we also do not have a mutual aid agreement with, uh, Green Mountain Power. There's nothing written, um, which is interesting.
Um, handshake too.
Might, might be something we should look at.
Actually, so handshake them.
Shake it a runaway agreement. So I wasn't sure if anybody had objection, um, again, it. Just because I know we made a conscious decision not to sign it before, which I think is weird, I'm not sure why.
Probably, it looks like we have to.
We're already a NEPA member, so the cost is, are, we already pay that cost.
Got it, so. Were we always a NEPA member? Cause.
We've been a NEPA member for ever, we actually have a NEPA, we have NEPA awards, um. We had our century award when Pam was here, uh, it's a thou, I think it's a thousand dollars a year we pay NEPA. Um, so it's, it's not a crazy cost.
So it's just a technicality really, it's a.
Correct.
So are there rates less?
I don't see.
The rates are the FEMA rates, um, so they're set up by FEMA, whatever FEMA said you bill. Um, what you won't get is minimum charges, there's no minimum charges, if they come out for three hours, they get three hours worth of work. Um, they come out for six hours, they get six hours of work. Um, they, um, cannot fluff, they cannot make profit. Um, so that's something Green Mountain Power can make profit and it does, does make profit. Um, they also will help us coordinate, so if we have a major outage like an ice storm, you know, we just, there's so much going on. Um, they actually will bring resources in just to help us manage it, um, which is big, because that's not something we have the capability of handling internally.
When does the clock start? And if they're coming from a long distance.
It does start when they leave their shop, um, so if they're coming from Hadley, it's forty-five minutes to an hour. Um, so they're gonna charge us for that hour of driving, um.
And dinner.
And it, it's interesting the way dinners. Yeah, if, if there's a place to stay that's needed, it won't probably be needed for Hadley, um, in particular. But I mean, the, the, when we're talking, we're talking storms that are costing us thirty, forty, fifty, hundred thousand dollars anyway. You know, like, in the grand scheme of things, it, it's, these are not the little one-offs that we have an issue with. Um, but the hope is to save that one twenty-six thousand dollar bill that we have from Green Mountain Power in February from happening again.
Yeah.
Um, because we could have had Hadley come and do the entire storm for a quarter of that cost. I told them about that twenty-six thousand dollar bill, that's just nuts, the other thing they won't do, they won't, they don't do staging. Um, so they won't, um, prepare for a storm, they'll, they'll have, uh, like Green Mountain Power will hire Rod to come in and, and stage for a storm. Um, they won't do stage, we, we'll, we call them and say we need them, um, and they will come and with the resources we request, which is, which is good. Um, and then the other thing with Hadley is we'll get storms that Hadley gets rain. Um, or, or whoever, I'm saying Hadley, maybe any of them, um, they're getting rain and we're getting snow, they don't have outages, we do.
Right.
Um, that's what's nice about Green Mountain Power, they're getting the same storm we're getting.
Or worse.
Or worse, and they're not, they're, they're not available. Um, and so this is a nice backup that we have, um, and I did specifically request for Mike Holla, uh, Highland, who's the president of NEPA. Um, that we put, are put in the Western Nass group, um, because Vermont and New Hampshire, there's no one near us. Um, there's no point in having us go. Um, he said that's fine.
Yeah.
Do you want me to motion?
I don't, i- if you feel more comfortable with that, I, I think that could be a general.
Are you assigned me?
Yeah, I think that is a general manager duty, but if you guys want to make a motion, I'm not opposed to that.
Make a motion? Or do we wanna just leave it? I'll make a motion that we authorize James to sign the NEPA Mutual Aid.
Hold on a second.
On favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm gonna skip down to the end, Tyler's not here, so I think we can skip the, the photo again, if you guys are okay with that. Um, so the last two items, um, we should go into executive session for. Um, we'll start McNeil and then we'll go into employee, um, conversation.
Can I ask two questions?
Certainly.
These are blips from the last time I was here.
Okay.
And I think you brought up something about at municipal center is an old satellite.
Hmm.
And batteries.
Yep.
I don't remember seeing anything.
There's no update on it.
Okay.
Um, I did talk to our lineman, they know it's on the list to. Decommission it, um, and bring it over, um, that's about where we're at right now, I think we're, um. We're a little scared to get into it and, and do it, so I think it's kind of a backburner, but it is on the list.
In the corner, it's not like.
Well. If you talk, talk to gig, it's a big deal, so.
Oh, yeah.
Anyway.
Um. And I saw the bucket truck in Robin Kingsley's yard today, they just disconnecting.
Yeah, so Robin Kingsley has been sold.
Hell, it's coming down tomorrow.
Uh, it's not coming down tomorrow.
I saw him on Monday or Tuesday of last week. And he said his closing was scheduled for last.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, and he said they had it postponed it for a week.
Yep.
So I had a neighbor for another week, I thought, and then. Uh, today I was out back, I knew he had cleaned out a lot of things. There was a ladder in the back.
Mm-hmm.
On his. Um. To go up to his chimney that he had in his back porch. So I called his cell phone number and I said. I didn't get a proper goodbye yet, and I think. There's a ladder in the back there, if you want me to move it, I'll move it for you. Because if they're closing tomorrow, on Wednesday. I don't know if they're gonna come and take pictures, so this and that. So I had to leave a message and he called right back. And he said, oh, thank God, he said, that was my father's ladder.
He's.
And it was the last thing I was able to handle. He said it's heavier than. You can do.
I can take it down.
I said, but I, I got it out.
You did, okay.
I did, I got it over in my side of the property. And I said, so, I was worried about them coming to take. Pictures of things that might miss.
Yeah.
And he said, oh, they closed the next day, like closed last Thursday.
Yeah.
He said he was gonna be coming back on Friday for things and he'd pick it up then, so.
Yeah, he, um, I asked him on, I think it was on Friday, I said, um, are you okay with this? Because I knew the closing had already occurred. And I said, um, he was there through the weekend moving things, and I said, can we?
Yeah, Sunday is when his bath trailer.
Do you mind if we, um, take the power down on Monday? And he said, no, that's fine, and the problem will happen, it's gonna have to be on the ground by December thirty first. Um, it has to be down by then. So, uh.
Sick.
It is, it's crazy, um, so it has to be down by then, um, this one, when we did it, the, um. The town was responsible for aligning who was gonna do it and when. This year, I guess the state is doing so many of them that the state said they're just gonna organize and hire their contractor. Um, so we don't know the timeline, it's gonna be they show up and start doing it.
Well, I hope you're wrong, you know, I wish it not come tomorrow, I hope they. Could contact deconstruction works, then.
Yes.
Get down. But.
Yeah.
I know if it's the state, they won't bother with that, no.
And it's, it's too bad, I mean, we were talking about the metal roof today, we were like, he's got a great metal roof, I mean, that. That's thousands of dollars worth of roofing up there, and it's just.
It's like, why can't.
Going in a dumpster.
Armed out, you know, I'm gonna get it.
So what I, I would say, unofficially in a non-public meeting, just take whatever you want, because we did it down there. Um, it is owned by the town at this point, so, um. Anyway. Um. Where's Robin going?
He's living with his daughter in Connecticut.
Yep, and then he is going on vacation. I believe for a couple weeks, and then he's coming back.
Oh, he is.
For a little bit.
Maybe stay with.
Figure out some doctor stuff. And whether we're keeping going or not.
He was supposed to have a pet scan, a pet scan or a cat scan this past Thursday, I thought he said, so which would. Tell him if he was in remission or not. And his daughter was getting married next October, and she moved it up to this October. So, uh, I've known him an awful long time. And I just. Hope the best.
Yeah. He's planning a trip to Las Vegas for unknown amount of time at some point. Uh, with, with a, with a decent check for the sale of his house, I anticipate, so.
He said he was gonna buy a motorhome, this was three years ago. And when I talked to him a month ago, he's like. Uh, he said, you can rent one, and you can just take another kind of a shorter trip.
Right.
Whatever, but he wanted to spend it in Florida.
That's how you're supposed to go.
In winter and. And be in his daughter's area, which I'm not sure where she's at, but, um.
He said he's not doing snow anymore.
I, but I even. The snow, the snow scooping, it's like.
Nope.
I threw that shit out. And his shovel was tired, so.
Right.
Um. Anyway, I just. Figured that's what they were doing. Because it looked like he had got.
Yeah, I, I just wanted it down, we were out doing the, uh, DCU install anyway. Um, and so I said, well, you can just scoot over and remove that, we ruined a consolidated line, and that line, the DB fiber. I, we didn't know enough, so I'm just gonna call, um, Patrick and tell him it's there, it needs to be taken down, hopefully at some point. Um, otherwise it's just gonna come down with an escrow.
So is the house locked?
I have no idea.
Okay.
That gig, gig used lock that one, so I anticipate.
Because there, before the dumpster left, it was a week ago Tuesday when I went in. Finally catch up with them, and I said, there was, the night before, somebody was out there with a flashlight and. Two little boys on a bicycle.
Um, really?
Only I didn't see the bicycles, I just saw the light, and I said, I know that can't be.
No.
No, weren't, um, not handy, handy. So I hollered out the window. Hey! And it moved. What the hell are you doing? Of course, they didn't know what window that was coming out of. If I'd been smart, I could have taken my club that I keep in the car, because I use Asdahl. And grabbed them bicycles.
There you go.
And so I went to tell Robin that, and he said, yes, they came and asked me if they could pick his dumpster, and he said. I really don't think that's a good idea, I said, you're a liability for Christ's sake. So I don't know what they got, but they couldn't reach anything anyway, because they were only standing on the.
Yeah.
Front part, but. It was fun.
It's gonna be weird, it's gonna be weird pulling it down.
Well, I, I, out of my kitchen window, I, I see a house all the time, and I still feel it.
We're gonna see all the way up at one hundred.
Freaking bullseye right on my barn, and that woman that did the. Seminar there earlier in the year. From the state, she lives in Wilmington. Oh, no. Hmm, my. My fear is that they're gonna do that culvert. And they're not gonna get a chance to do that opening, and that bottleneck right up here by Ferguson's is gonna bring it right back, so.
It's all gone.
Is FEMA bought that too? You know, just a la Ferguson. No? That was one of the, one of the other options was to get rid of that. Because it's like. Take a half mile down into a bottle.
WRC is.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, working on. Gates Pond. Doing a study.
Mm-hmm.
And. I'm, uh. Not a very good one, but I'm a WRC rep, Wyndham Regional Rep, and they, um. And Pete, uh, Berg. How do you say his last name? I can't think of it, anyway, he mentioned in the email that was to the three of us, uh, or two of us, um, he, he replied back. Um. It'd be a good idea, you know, that's a great idea, working on Bill Hill, Gates Pond Road, uh. But, um. It'd be a great idea if you could work on that culvert down.
Yep.
And she didn't know which one, I had to. I, I told her which one, I said, then. Uh, I filled her in.
The state will never do it until that road washes out, straight across.
I know.
That's.
I stray from that, but I just wanted to share that part of Bill Rabbit.
Yep.
So I make motion, we go into executive session at seven forty one, or. I don't know, a bunch of stuff we gotta talk about.
Real estate, evaluation of public.
Real estate and. Employee. Conversation.
Should we just sit out there?
Well, sure, you and I go out.
Yeah, you're funny.